Order.
And I believe, Tim, you have a motion that you'd like to make? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
It's... Kate's problem, thought that I had that song going. Oh, no, it's Mark's, I'm sorry, Mark.
What, what song?
Uh, I got Sierra and Dorian, wanna be in a...
Dana Black. Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna leave the sugar's on that.
No...
Okay.
I thought your formula was virtual.
It is, but we all have to be at the library.
Oh.
It's not virtual from your own house, it's, it's, everyone, we're in the computer lab at the library.
Oh, okay, okay.
And so, and it starts at one thirty or two o'clock, so it'll be right, pretty much during that.
The nice thing is they're, they're, you can access it anytime, like...
You can watch it anytime, it's on demand.
Did you move that, go down to school, or not?
Oh, I heard about that.
No, no. It's not for the price card. Oh, yeah. You know, I would've had it because, if they would've had it at the time because of my major, but... So how was his time, Kate?
He ran the fifteen K for a trail run in two hours. Five minutes and forty-three seconds.
I'm trying to think how many miles of fifteen K is it's, nine? Wait.
I'm sorry, it was a twenty-five K.
Oh.
Not fifteen, I told you, he ran a twenty-five K.
That's longer, that's like fif-.
It's not fifteen miles.
Yeah.
It's not, it's, it's not even fifteen miles, but it was a twenty-five K.
I know, I was supposed to do the five K, but I did nine miles before, so I was like...
Yeah, he did it in two hours.
That's pretty good.
Minutes, and some, some minutes, some days.
How was the food at the door, I don't even know what they served.
There wasn't food.
There's, there wasn't?
No, there was a banana bread.
Huh, I thought they were serving food. Well, heck, that's one of the reasons why you run.
Maybe they serve food after the back end.
You know, those five K people probably ate it though.
Was this the, uh, opening or what?
No, it's, uh, opening stampede.
Oh.
A fun one is the, uh, McQueen's Orchard one coming up in October.
Did I put this wrong now? Is that only, is that a five K?
No, there's three, three districts, there's five K, I don't know what the other one is, and then the Ichabod Challenge, which is both of them.
Okay.
So, for some...
There's five and ten in Ichabod, and oh, that is...
Yes, is that your husband?
I ran it three and ten last year.
Does your husband do another one?
I don't know, we ran it ten last year, I just feel surprised because if he... The store wasn't open when we got there, so like, I couldn't go in to get doughnuts. I just kept it around until Mark's ready, and I moved it out, but that's how we live.
I cannot tell you the last time I ate a donut. So... I just...
Okay, but it was, it was two hours, five minutes, and then it's forty-three seconds.
Came back?
She came back.
That was good.
She, she's had a couple of, heck of an initiation here. How you doing?
I'm fine, thank you. Bob, how are you?
Good.
Hey. Um, trying to think, what other ones I'm doing? I'm supposed to do, uh, Richmond half with my son, but he thinks he's gonna be deployed again, so he's...
You think he's gonna be what?
Uh, yeah. Deployed. So, he's in the Navy.
Okay.
Like, I'm really disappointed, 'cause I haven't been able to spend a lot of time with him. But you should join Road Runners, 'cause they get, send a calendar out.
What's happening? I'm gonna do, I'm gonna...
You can do it online.
Some pictures of that?
Yes.
That is hilariously terrible. I'm shocked that they didn't...
They'll, every Thursday morning, I'm back down there.
What did they say to that?
They're receptive, it's, it's a change.
The change? I do not, I don't know. Have they, from the, it's gonna be good?
No, I'm losing board. I'm, I'm all around. Shiny, girl.
Padded with the deets? That's what it is, padded, it's a...
It's alright.
Sorry about that, I got you singing.
What, I didn't hear any. I went, I got hold of that Josh on the food truck.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, how did that go?
Really, really good, he's going to, uh, he's gonna build a plywood, uh, barrier for that, uh, to stop the noise. We went over and listened to the food truck noise.
Wish I should've had you drop me off at home.
And I talked to the owner of the food truck, he just says, yeah. Asked him, I mentioned a couple of options, and he can move his trailer forward, the generator behind it, but it won't work, 'cause it's too close to the propane tank. So, I said, what's the plywood, just a little L-shaped thing, fold it up, put it away, but set it there, and just, just enough to block that noise, 'cause it's... We, we stood across the street, and it was, it was, it was still pretty loud.
Yeah.
But when a car went by, it stopped. Every time a car went by, it just, it just, so he said...
So it just broke it up?
Yeah, it broke it up enough, or, or just enough, so he said, um, yeah, he says, I don't have a problem with that, he says, I'll, I said, I'll help you build something if you need it, I said, no, I, I'll build it. And, uh, so in a couple of weeks, he's, he's not coming back this Friday, but all right, he says, he'll have something. So, I'm surprised, but then the, the folks were asking me about, uh, commercial building, that...
That's why I am that song in my head.
Yeah. One be right behind local areas.
And for ten, you'll...
They tried to tell me it was in the code, but they couldn't do that. I just asked Cody, and there's nothing in the code.
So we lost him.
A historic district?
Not even that, even historic district, colors don't matter. How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Yeah, I didn't really see. Should be good on the food truck.
Alright, where's Tim?
I, I moved the commodity to the second.
Uh, I'll...
Can you second?
I'll second the motion. So, for Tim, or?
At least we're ready.
Yeah, do you want to grab? Alright, so, we are, uh, back out of the executive session, uh, Barry made the motion, I seconded, um... We do have the reappointments and new appointments, I don't believe that there is any objections from any, any members, um, so with no objections, I will make the, uh, um... I don't want to get something, trying to think of the right term, uh, the, uh, the agreement that, to nominate all these candidates, three O. Sound reasonable?
Yes.
Okay, so three O for the appointment of Doug Sasco, uh, Keith DeWalt, Craig Ryder, Andrew Lorenz, Will Harborough, Kaylee Swadia, James Hagen, Anderson Elcroft, and the new appointment of Ethan Daniel, who is already nominated, three O, and, uh, without any objections, I will adjourn the meeting. Every none is adjourned.
Oh, I know, I know, I know, right?
We have, um, someone coming on. What?
Welcome to the conferencing center. Please enter your PIN, follow...
Do you want to move that one? Is that the zoning?
Your call has been placed in conference, you are the first caller to join the conference, please wait for further participants.
You want to move plane zoning up on the agenda, so... Well, I took the council's preference, I will do, so, let me get there. I don't really have anything else to report on, I could've done it all off. Jason, but Jason must've been finding, uh, finding his problems. Jason Daniels.
Oh, um, yes, yes. Oh, wow, what is your...
What's your guy?
Hey, Denny, how are you?
Yeah, good egg, he's a good egg.
Oh, man. Very. Yeah, that's fine. So, we got nothing else.
Thought you were just making a break. Just pulling the ten.
Yeah.
Hey, good evening, um, this is Perrisburg City Council for September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, I'm Tom Mack and the mayor, 'cause we have somebody on, um, let's do the, uh, roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Here.
Ms. Matroni?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Here.
Mr. Weber?
Here.
Please stand me, stand, if you're able to join me and say in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Minutes from the September seventh council meeting. Thank you, Mayor. Public hearing, I'm sorry. Uh, everyone did receive a copy of the public hearing, as well as the, uh, council meeting minutes, um, so I'm just gonna separate them, just, it was a little easier for me. Um, what I would... The council meeting minutes. You know what I got, so, oh, there, 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 Tash, I'm sorry. Um, I am going to make a motion, um, to approve the meeting minutes as ri- as written, and dispense with their reading.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Alright, and then I'll make the motion to approve the public hearing meeting minutes as written, and dispense with the reading. Discussion, roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Alright, thank you, Mayor. We want to note that we had a new, uh, reporting secretary, and that we drew right to the fire, and, uh, well done. We appreciate, we appreciate that. Um, special reports, we have no special reports, letters, communications, citizens' concerns, if you're here for a particular item on the agenda, uh, we did that item, but if you're, want to speak, come on up to the podium and introduce yourself, name and address.
Not on the agenda. Denny Barrett, twenty-five, four hundred, excuse me, Fort Megs Road, apartment thirty-seven. You've heard me many times say how much I like Perrisburg, what a good city it is, and it's certainly because of the administration and the city leaders, it makes it such a good city. But I need to put my two cents worth in for something that's been going on for the last few months, and ended this Saturday. About, uh, two or three weeks ago, Mommy had its usual summer, late summer festival. Last week, Bowling Green had its Black Swamp Festival. This past Saturday, the Islam, um, cell church out, out on top of Perrisburg, had its, had a big annual celebration, and next week, in Waterville, Roche de Boof is going on. This week in Perrisburg, nothing. There was a little bit of something, thank goodness. A group of volunteers made a two-week last-ditch effort to have a Harrison Rally Day, and they did, but it wasn't anything like the Harrison Rally Days that I've been going to for the last fifteen years. And over those fifteen years, almost every time, I would see, uh, city officials, mayors, council people, hanging around Louisiana Avenue and marching in the parade. This past Saturday, I saw nobody, so, very disappointing.
Hey, thank you, um, I have no report, but I do have a number of reappointments and appointments, um, so, uh, I will recommend the reappointment of Doug Sasco and Keith DeWalt for the Board of Income Tax Review, Craig Ryder to the Board of Zoning Appeals, Andrew Lorenz for the Planning Commission, Will Harborough to the Prac, Kaylee Swadia to, and James Hagan to the Street Commission, and Anderson Elcroft to the Way Library Board, and a new appointment of Jason Daniels to the Way Pub, uh, Library Board. Alright, now, Mayor, thank you, I'll jump in if you don't mind, um, we did have the Appointment Review Committee meeting here this, uh, evening, and, uh, every one of those, uh, candidates were, um, accepted unanimously, so at this time, I would like to make a motion to approve the individuals mentioned by the mayor.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, city administrator, do you have a report?
No report.
Finance director?
No report.
I see some things never change. Dave never had a report, except for occasionally say something about a calendar or something. A law director?
I do actually have a few things, you want to vote now, or do you want to do those later?
Um, let's do them later.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Oh, no, let's do them, well, let's just get them done, no, I'm sorry. They won't take long.
They should not. Um, these are two, uh, ordinances, two annex, two properties into the city of Perrisburg. Both of these are the request of the homeowner, they have been provided sewer and water some time ago, and we're just cleaning up some boundaries and some old annexations that needed to be cleaned up. One is at one-three-four-two-seven-Five Point Road, and one is at two-four-six-zero-two-Fort Megs Road. According to the ordinance, to the Ohio revise code, once these were approved by the Perrisburg, I'm sorry, the Wood County Commissioners, which they were, the first meeting sixty days after approval was when it was to come before a city council for due review, you have a hundred and twenty days to make a decision, if you don't vote in favor, they don't get annexed.
They could act on that day.
Absolutely, in fact, I would prefer you do that, and we'd just be done with it unless somebody has an objection, thank you.
Then, what I would do is, I would like to introduce ordinance forty-four and forty-five, twenty-twenty-one, and move the rule to suspend it, to allow for its reading by number and title only, and dispense with the second and third reading.
Second.
This, uh, roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ordinance forty-four, two thousand twenty-one, accepting the petition of Ann Griner and Keith Griner, one-three-four-two-seven-Five Point Road, for annexation into the city. Ordinance forty-five, two thousand twenty-one, accepting the petition of Ryan Roth, two-four-six-zero-two-Fort Megs Road, for the annexation into the city.
Alright, I move that ordinance forty-four and forty-five, twenty-twenty-one, be passed.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Um, president of council report. Thank you, Mayor, I do not have a report today. Finance committee. Oh, yeah, that's right, I talked about it and then forgot about it, uh, because there are people here, we're gonna move plane zoning out of order, my apologies.
Alright, thank you, honor, this is Tim McCarthy, chair of the Planning and Zoning Committee, we met on September fifteenth, president with us, committee member Story Coleman and Barry Van Huzen, also president with us is Cabot, our city administrator, Kate Seabrook, our law director, Brody Walters, our planning and zoning administrator, and Mark Easternly, our deputy planning and zoning administrator. For substantive issue last night, for that night was rezoning of a property on Williams Road, from C-four Highway Commercial to I-one Light Industrial, um, Mr. Walters told us the most recent acumen of the property was equal equipment, which is not dissimilar to the bandaid rent, which either has purchased or is under contract to purchase the site. We, the committee, all agreed that it makes sense there and fits the area, and we therefore voted three-zero to recommend approval of the rezoning request to the council, uh, which comes later in an ordinance, I don't have it marked, but we'll hear about it in a minute. Next item that night was the historic district boundaries update, um, Mr. Walter stated that the survey drawing showing the existing boundary of the district was used to identify boundary issues, such as excluded parcels, and parcels that could date structures that were only partially within the district. Mr. Coleman asked why they did this survey, and Brody explained the history of that, then Mr. Walter stated that they would be translating the drawing back into a legal description. Mr. Van Huzen asked about the Elm House, and Brody stated that the Elm House requested that the one building in the district be removed, and the Historic Landmarks Commission didn't find the Eliot leaving in that one building. Again, we voted three-zero to approve this to the council without our recommendation. Next item that night was a rezoning on, uh, Echo Junction Road near the Beck Diamond property, rezoning from office and service to C-four Highway Commercial. Um, Josh Schremsima, who's present with us tonight, was there by whom also, he represents the applicant Simon C.R.E., and he stayed there looking to provide an amenity in Perrisburg, and they had previously gotten input from Calendar Corner Residence. Mr. Schremsima stated that the surrounding properties are C-four, and that C-one, C-two, and C-three do not attract the same level of use. Excuse me, Mr. Van Huzen stated that going from OS to C-four seems like going from one extreme to another. Peter Gwinn, who represents the residence, stated that the new development should be compatible with residential areas, he asked to leave it as OS or C-one, and that rezoning to C-four could do damage to residential properties. I responded that I don't know what the right zoning is for that site, but C-four seems too extreme. A C-four Highway Commercial is said to be appropriate for areas fronting on major highways, which is not the case here. Uh, Mr. Coleman said it would be helpful to know what is going in here, and that we would be going from very restrictive to very broad, uh, Corey said he's hard-pressed to vote without knowing what will go in there. Uh, Mr. Schremsima stated that this parcel is an island of office space, that they only work with national credit tenants, and that if they walk away from this property, the interim property will decline. He also stated that C-four is the highest and best use. Um, Mr. Walters pointed out that there will be more than a hundred and twenty feet between the property line, recognize that addressing residents' concerns are veiled and genuine, but the, the change is not inappropriate. Mr. Van Huzen asked how long it has been OS, and Mr. Walters said at least since two thousand, thousand and six. The committee agreed three-o to recommend against rezoning the property. Uh, we also discussed the land use plan update, um, it was a subject to a plan at a public hearing two weeks ago, um, the sole issue really discussed that night was the, uh, issue involving the Heights. I reminded everyone that the city is not going to annex and bulldoze forty-four homes. Paul Velazas, president of Perrisburg Heights Community Association, recapped the comments he had made in the public hearing, reminding everyone that they want the Heights to remain a residential community. And he also said that Perrisburg Heights Community is not a big word, it is a target in the land use plan, and he told us about a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant that the Heights had received, in order to put in sidewalks and lampposts, repay the parking lot, and build an outdoor pavilion. Mr. Walters said that the whole plan is, the whole thing was never intended to be secretive. There was discussion about the fact that we are gonna be bringing a consultant in to do a presentation about the land use plan update, as a part of a council committee of the whole meeting, and the city will coordinate with the Heights Association on that date. I assured everyone that they would be a part of the process through the end, and thanked them for coming, uh, Mr. Coleman encouraged them to follow the city on Facebook and Twitter, and reminded them that all our meetings, city council meetings are posted on the city website. Uh, final item that night was land use permits, we had talked about that last month's meeting, as there's an issue regarding land use permits for extroversion food services, super suppers, and seven little cupcakes. Uh, Brody, at our request, had checked with Wood County, and they had issued a permit before the inter- interior work was done, the county conceded that it should have requested a city land use permit before issuing its permit. Uh, Mr. Walters said the businesses are currently existing in conflict with the code, with two planning and zoning code violations, uh, Ms. Cabot said that food processing, which is what these three, uh, could do there, is permitted, and that is an option available to the businesses. The committee expressed support for enforcing the code as written, uh, there is no further business, we adjourned at eleven PM, we meet again on Wednesday, October thirteen, at five-thirty PM. And that, we give a couple of ordinances here, um, and I'll, I'll introduce them separately, I'd like to introduce ordinance fifty-one, dash, twenty-twenty-one, and move it to be suspended through office reading by number and title only, and dispense with the second and third reading.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-one, two thousand twenty-one, amending the zoning of the city of Perrisburg, Wood County, Ohio, to rezone one-three-four-two-five, William Lewis, C-four Highway Commercial, to I-one Light Industrial.
Alright, I would then move that ordinance fifty-one, dash, twenty-twenty-one, be passed. Second.
Discussion. Are you none, uh, roll call?
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
I would then move that ordinance fifty-two, dash, twenty-twenty-one, be, I'd like to address it, move it to be suspended through office reading by number and title only, and dispense with the second and third reading.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ordinance fifty-two, two thousand twenty-one... Ordinance fifty-two, two thousand twenty-one, amending the zoning map of the city of Perrysburg, Wood County, Ohio, to rezone property on Echo Junction Road from O-S Office and Service to C-four Highway Commercial.
Uh, I'll introduce it for passage, although I intend to guess that I would move that ordinance fifty-two dash two thousand twenty-one be passed.
Second.
I have discussion, Mayor.
Okay, discussion.
Um, since the committee agreed on this one, um, three to zero, to recommend against the rezoning of the property, and I would have to say that I will not be voting for this one.
All right. Any other discussion?
Well, I guess I can tackle this one, since I've had some time to sit on it. Um, the more I think about this one, and I wish Mr. Gwynne were in the audience, um, because I've kind of changed my opinion on this the more I've thought about it. Um, it really bothered me, uh, during that meeting, uh, everything around it. It's the only thing that is office and service. Um, and it's been for sale, my understanding, since about two thousand eight as an office service. They've been trying to do something with this property. Um, and I really just do not like, uh, impeding someone's ability to use and enjoy their land. I understand it. It potentially affects their neighbors at, at Calendar Court. Um, but they have a right to use their land as well, and I think that is, the surrounding areas are all C-four, uh, so I'm hoping the, the impact would be minimal to the, to the residential neighborhood that's adjacent to it. There is a buffer there of a driveway and a ditch, um, and hoping they'll be good neighbors. Uh, but with that, I, I'm going to go ahead and vote that this gets rezoned, because I, I really don't see any way around this. I think what will happen is potentially there will be a petition down the road for potentially, uh, another rezoning, and it'll go through, uh, because it'll sit there for longer. So I, I intend to support this one.
Any other, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say that, uh, I am actually a person who lives right over by here. I don't live in Calendar Court. Um, I've lived over in, uh, it's two different neighborhoods, just buying houses literally around the corner from each other. Uh, I know this area fairly decently. I know the concerns with the intersection on twenty-five and, and Echo Junction there. That is probably our worst intersection in the, the city. Um, uh, with that, and I can say that when Costco was coming through, I was probably one of the few people there that was in support of it, uh, just because I knew the, the upgrades were already coming to that intersection. Those upgrades have definitely helped that intersection itself. Uh, I do want to point out that, uh, this is, if I understand correctly from what Mr. Walter said at the public hearing, that there is not gonna be any curb cuts put into Echo Junction. Uh, they are going to be required to hook up to the driveway that has the traffic signals. Um, and so I, I do intend to, uh, support this transition, uh, just as we look at the C-four and the surrounding, um, zoning around it, it seems to make sense, and it doesn't seem to fit overall with the surrounding uses itself. Um, but, uh, that's really, really what I have to add into that. Just 'cause, 'cause I know the people who came in and are interested, just so you know. Uh, we did move it up on the agenda, 'cause people were from out of town, so I apologize for that. Tim has read the minutes from the, uh, committee report out, and now they have moved for consideration of the action.
Uh, and since they're there, I want to recap kind of what I said. I said, uh, I know we were at the planning and zoning. You could probably tell I was teetering. Uh, I, I've given this considerable, uh, a thoughtful thought, and it, it really just bothers me that, uh, we're affecting someone's ability to use their land. Uh, the fact that they've had it for sale for a certain period of time, since like two thousand eight, uh, and it's been zoned office and service, and they've been trying to actively do something with it. Um, and I, I, I think, again, that eventually we end up back here, and there's another application to rezone, um, and, and we have a potential tenant locked in. Uh, I think we need to, to allow this land to be used, so I, I intend to support this.
I, I have a quick, well, it's not questions, more long-line comment. C-four by definition abuts a highway. This piece of property does not have direct access on any highway, and in my, my opinion, with that definition, it does not meet C-four criteria. Um, one suggestion was C-one or whatever. And I would also like to point out that that was always zoned like that when he bought that, and he should have been aware of that.
Yeah, I, um, as I said that night, um, I don't know what the zoning ultimately will be. Um, like, I think Barry and I both were a little untalked, just going, I said that night, I didn't say the minutes, but going from O-S to C-four is like going from zero to ninety in a minute. Um, I, I could see this. I don't think this is the last we'll hear of this property. I think it's gonna, um, come back, uh, maybe with consideration of a different commercial zoning classification. Um, you know, it, it might come back with a more specific project. Corey said that night a couple times, and I understand that the, the representative can't meet his request, but he said a couple times that it would be great to know who the tenant would be. Um, you know, so I, I think this may not be the last we'll hear of this. We may hear a proposal for a less intensive commercial zoning category. We may hear a proposal like came through with Costco, where you had a very specific, uh, description of the use that would be put in there. Um, so there, I, I don't know that this can be the final end for the next twenty years as to what's gonna happen to this land, but, uh, for now, I, I remain convinced that C-four is, uh, just too much.
Uh, no other comments from council of the applicant? If, uh, would you like to have opportunities to speak, or are you comfortable where you, where we are?
No.
Can't hear you yet.
Again.
All right, fix it again. Well, we're with. Pete, do you want to say anything? I don't know if there's any more that needs to be added at this point. I think we've talked in length about it.
He should be.
Yes.
He's been talking.
We're focused on that, so why don't just come up for a second?
Can you go on to the actual Zoom and select the speakers?
I agree with Mr. McCarthy that this is, uh, going from zero to ninety in one fell swoop. I think the real point I want to make are permitted and special use, uses that could be put on this property. No matter what the developer says now about national credit uses, you must look at what could go in there, and a lot of it shouldn't go next to a residential area. More McDonald's, Sonic Burgers, outside dog kennels, gas stations, auto repair. I think I left my list, and I think Brody also left the same list. I think there's an opportunity, and I'm not so foolish to think this will, this property won't be developed. However, and I think at some point it will probably be of some type of commercial or a mixed residential and commercial, but this is absolutely too intense. And I, as I remarked before, if you want this to look like Route Twenty with signs all over the place and every franchisee known man stuck in there, then that's what you're gonna get.
Thank you. Sure. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Josh Courtney, three-five-nine-one River Ridgeway. Uh, I was here at the planning and zoning meeting the other night, and, um, I, I understand the, the position, the concerns of the, the residents, of the residential community that's, that's close. I'm sorry, I don't remember the name. Corner.
Calendar.
Calendar Corner. Um, Ms., uh, Josh couldn't provide the exact, um, you know, type of business or what use would be there. Um, afterwards, I thought maybe, I don't know, if a couple more questions, would it suffice if he could tell us the, um, the number of employees or the type of, um, you know, the total income that could be generated or jobs that would be added to the city? I don't know if that's a question he could answer by losing him, um, or by losing the potential suitor. Um, also with, I, I did just want to indicate too, and kind of, um, bridge to the discussion we had at the Heights, that I understand the concerns of the citizens here, and even a hundred and twenty or a hundred and fifty-foot space or buffer, you know, doesn't seem to be quite enough for them. And we do have neighbors in the Heights that have this commercial use on the other side of a privacy fence where there's a dumpster. So, when, when we kind of balance what's okay in one spot in the city and what's okay not far away, I, I hope we, uh, are looking at the overall benefit of the city at large before we lose the potential suitor. And then, I don't know if it's possible through a, um, um, you know, I don't know if you can rezon to C-four, but then set limitations on specific portions of that C-four. Um, you know, I don't know if that's anything that's been discussed, um, if those specific limitations, three or four or five, would then, you know, uh, would be suitable to the, to the suitor potential needs on that site. Uh, thank you, and if, if, if he, if we could answer any of those questions about potential, um, employees or income in the area, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry I got interrupted up. Thank you very much. Is it possible the conference call is disrupting?
Yeah.
With that, I'm not sure.
Speakers, or?
Because he, he is, you can see his mic moving.
Yeah.
Speakers on.
Hey, Cody? Could you check in that setting? Is he gonna hit the dropdown for the, um?
Let's just ask him yes or no questions.
I, I had, I actually had to do this on a, uh, a call I was on.
Twelve to fifteen full and part-time employees.
So we get those settings back up for the? You had them there.
So we're not on that live line for planning and zoning, are we? The committee meetings? I, I'm just trying to figure out, because we didn't have any trouble at planning and zoning, talking to them. But those aren't on the teleconference, are they?
Correct.
Okay, so that's tied up.
Click the arrow by the mute button in the left corner, bottom left. By, by the mute button, the up arrow, and select speaker. Try this, try one of the other speakers. Can you hear, can you say something? That, that wasn't it. Try the other one. Keep that one more time.
Hello, hello?
Here we go.
All right.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Oh, hey, no problem. Thank you for trouble shooting, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak on that. Um, you know, hearing to the speakers here, I don't know if I picked up every one of these questions that was coming through from the audience and, and as well as the council members, um, but I'll try to address them specifically, and if there is anything else that, uh, we're not covering.
Just quickly, just you, you did, uh, type in the chat, just the record has it. Employees twelve to fifteen, full and part-time, and then a national tenant, automotive parts, repair, not service.
Retailer.
Retailer, yeah.
And, and yes, not repair, not repair. No, and then the reason that I want to convey this information to you all is because I understand that there's some concerns about the intensity of use coming to this property. Um, I will first point out that some of the, uh, as you had stated, special uses that would be allowed within the C-four designation would require just that, special use permits, which would be left, uh, to the discretion of the city and its elected officials to be able to decipher. Now, that being said, uh, what we are, uh, proposing is an, an allowed use without a special use permit. Um, frankly, our approach to developing this property is not one of highest intensity. It's one that relatively middle of the road, and what we do believe is a complementary use to the surrounding properties, um, which was correctly stated from the PNC Subcommittee meeting. Uh, we had pointed out that we do believe that this is the highest and best use, in addition to be in conformance with the surrounding properties, which are notably C-four, despite the fact that they are not on a highway quarter. Um, you know, I just want to be able to extinguish some of those concerns, uh, because as we're looking at this and interpreting the code, we do believe that we fit squarely within the C-four designation. And furthermore, some of the design elements that would be required of us within that designation would not only allow for the enhancement of that surrounding area and complement the existing buffer between Collinor Court and its residents, um, but we would also be in a position to, uh, support this property by creating jobs, having an economic tax impact on that, uh, on the city and on the area. And to that note, um, we, we do believe that this is something that will complement the area rather than detract from it, and certainly more so than, uh, an unattended-to property that it, nobody is necessarily looking at on a day-to-day basis. This offers the opportunity to transition successfully into a more conforming, uh, growth pattern in the area, uh, one that is, uh, has been clearly embraced by the community and its constituents, despite some of the challenges faced on previous zoning cases such as Costco. Um, it would seem to me that the growth pattern is, uh, speaking to that, uh, demand and acceptance of the commercial retail uses. And I would further point out that the O-S zoning that currently, uh, exists on the property would be considered a spot zone, uh, which has been clearly indicated by each of you. Um, but the point that I want to make in saying that is that if it remains such, yes, it's true that it may ultimately be developed someday, but we're here today. We are prepared to move forward, uh, provided we're able to, uh, receive, uh, the approvals that we are requesting, and we will be moving swiftly towards developing this property, uh, in a responsible and effective way. Um, we have done this in a number of locations throughout the country, and, uh, to this day, I have yet to receive complaints from, uh, city, uh, as it relates to our retailer's operations. Uh, as I pointed out, national credit tenants are that because of the stringent approach that they take to, um, bringing quality service, uh, responsible aesthetics, and conforming to different cities' requirements. And so I'm here to tell you that we're here to have a conversation with the city, with the community, uh, with each of you, and try to have a constructive outcome for that. But without adjusting the zoning to allow for that, that conversation is no longer possible. So I, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight, and again, if you have any questions that I haven't answered, by all means.
Josh, is this, so I, I'm looking at a new, uh, kind of diagram on the, the plat. Is that the building footprint that you expect, the eighty-foot, eighty-five-foot by one-fifty? Because I don't believe I saw that at the committee level.
I do not know what you are looking at.
That's not there. That's not there.
I think those are the dimensions of the lot.
No, there's a.
There's a blue square with a.
I don't know. I'm sure you probably can't see this here.
I'm afraid, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I could walk it all up to the camera, but I don't think I'm tall enough, but it's not, it's not there.
Well, tell me again, is this something that you're looking at on this particular parcel that would be?
Yes. It's showing a, it's, it's showing a, looks like a blue square, kind of a outline of a building in the, uh, north-west corner of the property.
And it looks like it's also giving me distances from the nearest residents, which kind of increases the, I know that obviously if it gets rezoned, you don't necessarily have to follow these plans, but it looks like it's purposely giving me distance of the nearest houses, too. plans, but it looks like it's purposely giving me distance of the nearest houses too. Um, so I don't know if you're...
You're correctly seeing, and without seeing that, it sounded like you said one-ten by eighty-five, is that correct?
One eighty-five by one-fifty.
That would be larger than the type of footprint that I would expect to see on this property, frankly.
Do we know where this came from?
That being said, I mean, I, I don't know exactly what you're looking at, so it's difficult for me to respond based on that technical element. What I can tell you is that standard prototype of what we would be, um, uh, requesting following approval would probably fall into the, the, um, category of between eighty-five by eighty-five to closer to eighty-five by one-ten. Uh, so we're looking at between seven thousand and roughly eighty-five hundred square feet for building footprint. Um, we often operate with, uh, between, uh, twenty-nine and thirty-five parking stalls, depending on code requirements. Um, and again, just to kind of, uh, speak to what I had said previously, this is a fairly middle-of-the-road, not especially contentious when it comes down to the use, often complementary to other retail uses in the area. And I wish I had exactly what you had in front of you, because I could probably illustrate a little bit further detail here.
It was prepared by the administrator, by, um, the planning administrator, I think it was attempting to show the loca-, a location and a distance from properties.
Mr. Van Gogh, that's the actual building, as the planning zoning administrator understood it, not the box of the actual building.
Well, Josh just said the buildings are typically those dimensions.
Yeah. This is too big.
Well, if you include the parking lot, it's probably not.
And as far as the building orientation, I mean, there are design standards, uh, that fall within the city code, uh, for, uh, civil and site design, of course, and we would most obviously be subject to design and aesthetic standards. Um, we do have the latitude to address some of the concerns coming from the residential side, as we had pointed out, uh, in our voluntary community meeting, um, when they had provided us with their letter of opposition, which rather than looking at it as an opposing force, to me, the way that I read into that was, you're showing me some challenges and objectives, and none of them were really outside the ballpark of what we would typically encounter or try and find solutions to.
Uh, Josh? Oh, go ahead.
Yes, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, you can't see, but, uh, Bob Mack has come to the podium and helped, and, um...
Yes.
And will basically explain some of the things I think will clarify some of the issues.
I read with Brody, Bro just...
By all means, thank you.
Uh, yeah, hold on a second.
So I, I asked, uh, Brody, is the blue of building footprint, sent him a picture of this, and he said, it's just a theoretical building footprint of what they might build. I believe it's a lot bigger than, uh, they would actually build though.
That's his way of saying it, but I'm not sure that it adds very much clarification and we didn't get it to Josh, so that's something we're gonna talk about.
May I?
Yes, you may, sir.
My name is Robert Mack. I'm with the real estate firm Signature Associates, Four Seagate Suite 608 Toledo, Ohio 43604. I've been retained by Black Diamond Landscape to assist them in selling this property over the last few years. Um, and the zoning certainly has been a hindrance to our efforts, because, well, especially during COVID, there's really not a whole lot of activity, but we're in the aftermath of COVID, um, we have been able to procure this user, which seems to be middle of the road in your C four, nothing extreme. And, um, the drawing that I think Brody put together with the, uh, measurements, um, the comment was made that the use would be a, as near as a hundred and twenty feet from the homes on Collinor Court. Brody was trying to say on that drawing that it's more than twice that amount, because if you're a retailer, your interest would be having as, you know, all your, your building as close to Route twenty-five as possible. And so their parking field would be towards the west, and, and, and that would, of course, keep the, the highest level of commercial use as far away from the residential component. And I would agree with everybody else that said that the current zoning on this piece, just like the property, um, that I'm involved with on Williams Road that you did just rezone, is a prime example of spot zoning. Um, we're just asking to get the zoning that surrounds this piece, and for example, the bank that's going in across the street, they needed C four zoning. And they're on a Costco outlot or in-lot, whatever you want to call it, they too do not have a curb cut on Echo Junction, because they're trying to minimize their impact, just like these folks are not requesting a curb cut on Echo Junction. Keep in mind that somebody else could come along in a C one, C two, and, you know, it's a parcel, and they would want access to the public right of way. And that, so they may or may not use the existing curb cut at the light. These people are gonna continue to, that's the only access they'll have is through that curb cut that's already there at a light. So that, clear us some things?
That's very helpful, thank you.
Now, why, and I don't have the list in front of me, so I apologize, but I would imagine a, a retail store would fall into like a C one, C two, or C three as opposed to C four, uh, and I'm sorry if I'm incorrect on that, but why exactly are you, uh, we applying for a C four rather than one of those if, if the potential suitor falls into one of those?
I'm not completely familiar with the code, but C one, C two, those are generally like maybe a optical shop or something, just a little less traffic. Um, and this would be like about as general of retailing as you could get.
Let me clarify, retail business less than sixty thousand square feet is permitted in both C three and C four. And if it's more than sixty thousand, it's a special approval use in both C three and C four. I assume this would be a retail business.
It is a retail business, and I think the drawing, the blue spot that Brody made was an overstatement of the footprint of the building.
And I couldn't do the math when Josh gave you the dimensions quickly enough to compute what that square footage is. Twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet, what is it called? Twelve thousand? Twelve seven. Okay. So that would be a permitted use, but either in C three or C four.
I think it's also permitted in C two.
Yeah, right. See, we, we know here tonight more than we did at the committee, I, I don't know if we proceed tonight or send it back to committee, but we were not told that, I, we were told we couldn't know the name of the tenant, and I fully understand that. We didn't have any information at all regarding the potential use. Um, so I, as I look at this, if the, my initial reaction is if it's likely to be falling to these two categories, why C four as opposed to consider C three or potentially C two? Or C one? Yeah, C one, it's not permitted or a special approval use in C one. C one's a downtown, I think. It's neighborhood commercial. Oh, C two's just central business. That's right.
So C one would be a campus special permit.
So, Mr. Chairman, you're asking whether should go back to committee, and I would kind of like it to, because I, I think there's new information here that, that we can probably build off of also, you know, moving forward. I just don't know if we're in that position tonight, so.
I, I would tend to, yeah, when you have this map, I mean, the blue depiction of what could be building footprint, no, that's probably not accurate, Brody conceded it wasn't, he was just doing a, taking a ballpark stab of what it might be, and it sounds like it's much larger than it would be. Um, Josh doesn't even have this map in front of him, um, that we're all looking at. Um, and I, maybe what could come back to the committee would be a depiction, uh, Josh, if you could, your best, or Bob, whoever's working on this, your best estimate of where the building would be located, what the dimensions would be, um, we'll go with their representation, it's an automotive parts retailer, uh, and I guess we'll consider the project in those terms. That's at least my opinion.
All right, so we have a pending, um...
So real quick, I just want to give some clarification on, uh, the zoning uses. Uh, if it was to go to, say, a C one, the retail business is not part of the C one zone.
Correct.
Um, so it's very limited in C one. I think it's actually almost more limited than what office space is, if I'm looking at this correctly.
Um, very limited. Farm markets and stands, animal services, outdoor and indoor, the gym and fitness facility.
How many is?
Neighborhood business, less than ten thousand square feet, offices and banks, personal services, repair services concerned.
Could this be permitted in C three with a special, how to use?
Well, I know it would be, if it's twelve thousand square feet, it would be permitted, it would be a special.
Josh, can you tell us if it's over or under twelve thousand square feet? Because I don't know the answer.
I can tell you that it would be under twelve thousand square feet. And if I may, you know, part of the reason that we were attracted to C four designation, often when we're looking at some of the planning and, and land use elements to any given parcel and whether or not it's viable, and certainly whether or not it would be conforming to what we need to accomplish, uh, we look at the surrounding uses, the overall fabric of what's occurring and what has occurred in recent times. And when looking at this parcel, uh, we, we are looking at, uh, abundance of C four highway. And so, you know, we can look at the, the details of that definition and look at the words word for word, but it's, you know, from our interpretation, we see, uh, a land use pattern that exemplifies C four highway being a corridor, if you will, and within that you would find a conforming use of C four rather than an additional spot zone of C two or three. Um, that's not to say you couldn't find a way of making it happen, it's just more a matter of looking at the conforming approach to that pattern, so that we can increase our viability for success, um, within that framework. So more than anything, we're looking at the existing pattern of what exists in Perry's Burke today, and where that's been coming from and where it's possibly going. So we're not looking at it in terms of how intensified can replace the land use, uh, it has more to do with what's conforming and applicable to what we are desiring to do. And so as I had represented, uh, you know, we do intend to take a fairly middle-of-the-road approach as it relates to that intensity, um, while staying within the conformance of that. And, uh, in, in, you know, just clarifying that statement, uh, that was made regarding C three plus special use, we do also want to avoid any kind of special use permitting, if possible. I mean, we're, we're more than happy to follow the guidelines of the city to the T. We just want to avoid that type of approach to it if we can, uh, in the spirit of saving time and, and getting, uh, this development to market. Um, one of our tenants in this, uh, at this company is to be first and to be fast, uh, we, and persist. And so very often when we're approaching these projects, we're under a fairly tight timeline to do just that and to perform within that construct. And so in looking at the zoning, looking what our available options were, we did believe that C four wasn't back the highest and best use, and one that would facilitate, uh, both, uh, the responsible economic growth of the city while facilitating us the fabric to try to work with it.
Well, I have two reactions to that, Josh. One is that, uh, your client wants to be first and be fast, well, if they're an automotive parts retailer, they're not first, we already have that in hand. Um, and I'm a little surprised at your reluctance, Tom, I know generally you don't like special approved, approval use zoning, but yet I've heard you say a couple times that you want to work with the city and the nearby residents as to what the site looks like, um, you know, and that gives you the things like parking, where the building sits, uh, how you, what you deal with the parking lot, uh, and that's, that's the typical stuff we do on a special approval use. So I'm, I'm now a bit confused as to whether you're willing to do that or not.
Well, I, I don't, I don't see those things in conflict, frankly. I mean, we had, had started this process a number of months ago. In fact, we had preceded the application and request for rezone, uh, a, a few months ahead of time to, uh, provide the community with the opportunity to speak to us directly. Uh, we welcome a public forum, we welcome public hearings, and have tried to take a responsible approach to participating and, uh, creating that, um, that platform for others to be heard. And, uh, it sounds to me like the most vocal, um, uh, people regarding this project are the residents, uh, adjacent to the site. And we've done everything that we can to speak very clearly and specifically to the concerns that they've represented, uh, and provide solutions to those concerns. So while I agree with your perspective on that, um, I would respectfully state that we have been doing all that we can to incorporate those into our project considerations while also concurrently progressing the project, uh, towards an actual approval. And at the end of the day, we can discuss all the, uh, options and limitations and considerations, but we still, at the end of the day, do need to have choices made and certainly need approvals in order to move forward. And furthermore, um, you, you know, we also have to be respectful of the way that the economics work behind these projects and the way that time can place limitations upon those. So just like office space maybe was a viable approach to using this property ten years ago or five years ago even, uh, it is no longer the case now. Uh, and it is in part due to the market forces that we are subject to. And while it is first and foremost important to know where your constituents lie in terms of their considerate concerns, um, it's equally as important for us to be, uh, respectful of our constituents and what we're needing to hold in balance. And that's why I would point out that, you know, part of the zoning, the underlying, uh, narrative of each zoning code, uh, is what we're addressing today. We're requesting that adjustment, and I will continue to represent the fact that we are open and considerate to, uh, the voice of the people, uh, in the community as well as in the city. And, uh, we will, uh, provided we are able to move forward on this, we will continue to be receptive to that and incorporate anything that we can.
Um, well, I, whether it goes back to committee or not, Josh, I can tell you, we'll, we'll move expeditiously. You're probably not surprised, you're the first developer who, you're not the first developer who came through and said time is of the essence. We, we deal with that, we understand that, we, we respect that, and we'll try and address it. We don't want to deny a business a legitimate opportunity if it fits in our community, so, um, we'll, we'll do what we can in that regard. I, I made the motion for passage. Um, Tom, are you a parliamentarian?
We're gonna...
Withdraw and move to table?
We had this discussion, I think you actually can withdraw it. You're the one who moved forward, and there's been no vote to it, and so there's been, you want no action on it, and then I assume we'll go back to committee then? Um, because it's a zoning issue, there would need to be public notice and all of that. So I, I guess I, I'm not sure what your next meeting would be.
I, I don't think there needs to be a new public notice, would there?
Well, I don't, I don't know that.
I, I guess what, what additional information are we hoping to get by table?
I'd like to have a discussion with the neighbors in a forum where you can really have a discussion about how this new use is gonna work. You know, council isn't really amenable to become a committee. And we've furnished new information tonight, I'd like to have Josh look at the map that Brody did, and have them develop a, a better depiction of where the building will be. Assuming this project goes forward, we gotta keep in mind too, although Josh has a client who, he, they have a very specific project idea, once it owns zoning, whatever's in there, you go out of business. And then we're left with a shell, and you're left with the full array of C four uses, so I think we gotta think about that, and think further whether it can work in a different zoning category. We vote tonight on voting C four down.
Well, okay, would, would the council expedite it, uh, for the applicants, we could, we can find out, talk to Brody and see if there needs to be, we have to go back to the start?
Mm-hmm.
For the application process, the public notice process, or do we just can't go back to committee? I don't know the answer to that. And we'll, so I can just, if you don't mind, if I jump in real quick, if this is gonna get tabled, I would prefer to see if we could have something back, uh, by the October fifth meeting within two weeks. I don't know if the plan zoning... Well, yeah, there might need to be public notice, because you're changing the zoning. Well, that, I don't think that's necessarily changing at this point, it's more of a conversation. Well, yeah, but you have various issues to move it along, I would think, even if you're having a conversation to something. If council wants to meet with the applicant first and decide what zoning is appropriate, maybe that's something. I would like to try to put a couple, to move this along as quickly as possible, so we can explain the zoning committee, if there's another change and we have to go through this, this public hearing request, I, I don't want to hold this up any further. If it's, let's say C two is the one that comes as a recommendation. I'm not sure exactly what the process is, I'm looking at our law director on that, but...
Well, and I think if we get an application for C four zoning, we put it through the hearing process, um, I would think we can... I would think we can consider other zoning options. But the purpose of the notice is to put people on notice. Hey, there's going to, there might be a change here of some sort. And if it can move as quickly as to bring it back to council on October 5th, is that the date?
That would be the next one.
Yeah, we can, we can do that.
Because I mean, I'm, I'm still comfortable voting today, but.
We're speaking for very.
I know we're being that one. Our law director's at the dais. Josh, as you know, the law director's at the, can't see that, so go ahead.
I would believe that this was presented as a C4 zoning amendment.
You have to turn it down.
And you, if you wish to have it be a C something else, it needs to go back through all of the steps and processes. I don't believe that it can be changed at this stage in the process so that everybody has noticed that you're going to do it as a C2. It goes to commission, it goes to public hearing, it comes back before city council. So I just want everybody to be aware that if the decision is that you would prefer it to be a C1 or a C2 rather than a C4, my understanding is that that will have to go back to commission, committee, and then city council.
Well, and what I'd do is I'd ask you to take a more deeper dive on that case and see what your final conclusions are. We're not asking to shoot.
Right, yeah.
Wouldn't be fair to the applicant or us or you, so I'd ask that you, yeah, dig into it and see what you think is right.
I think before we vote, I would like one thing, just, and I appreciate everything. I still, it's not going to change necessarily your vote, Tim. But I would like, if we could project the zoning map on one of these, so you can see kind of the parcel we're looking at in the consortium of things and why. I know Jan's question was based on the definition of what C4 highway is. And I know Brody was pretty quick to squash that at the committee meeting to say that's not really the intent of that definition. But just, just real quick on looking at that map and then where the C2 and C3 are versus the C4 and what the current parcel is with office and service, I think it's worth looking at because that's, when I was thinking about it, that's, that's kind of what got me where I was, and I was not for the rezoning of this. So you'll see the C2 basically is all the downtown area. The C3 is, is your, you know, your Churchill's, that shopping mall.
Pro, C3.
So, yeah, will you put the cursor on right where we're talking about?
So this is the O7. C4, it's around the guy.
And it's important to note that that little cul-de-sac, I know it looks very similar color, is actually, I think it's residential multifamily, which is kind of hard to interpret there, but there is residential space right there. But all of the surrounding area is C4, which is why I believe in what he says, we're looking at this when we do that application. And then I think the question becomes at the committee level, if we're trying to drive a C2 and C3, does that really make sense with what we got? That, that's just my thought and kind of what changed my mind for putting this through. Because I know had it been C2 or C3, my recommendation would have been to pass this. So.
Okay, so any other discussion?
I'd like to know why, is, there's a reason why this retail facility cannot work in a C3, why we cannot?
It can, I think.
Okay, then why, why aren't they applying for C3?
I think because they looked at our zoning map is basically what they're telling us. Spot zoning, they're trying to make it fit with our, what looks like our plan is.
So if I can answer, I don't want to necessarily answer for them, but historically what we've done with, in our zoning changes is typically with the zoning maps and they change, they have to change with something similar to what's around it. You look at the CAT facility down there in the bottom left corner, that's all purple. That was part of the planned business park. When they came in to utilize it, it needed to be changed to industrial, which was a zoning across the street. From my understanding and how I would support zoning changes, it has to be similar to what's around it. And so that's one of the reasons why it seems to fit with the zoning that's around it. And my concern is if we continue to move forward with the change to C2, C1, or C3, it's not necessarily a match to the uses that are already currently around it and would be still considered a spot zoning at that point. So that's, that's my feelings or my belief on that.
As I said, if I've already done.
Yes.
As I mentioned the other night, and we can't recreate this history either, but just north where Black Diamond is, because typically you're going from C4 to C3 to C2 to lighten the density or the, what actually is occurring. Somewhere along the line, that Black Diamond section, even though it was a buffer between C4 and the residential area was Creed. So it's just interesting that we put that C4 right next to the residential area. And of course, the reason we don't, the reason we're struggling with C4 now is the residential area. So it, the softening of a C3 just seems to make a little bit of sense if it's viable.
All right, any other questions?
Yes.
Hammond's.
Yes, I would say what I said before. The committee had recommended three to zero to say no on this project. My, my comments are that I'm just not for the current zoning that's being proposed.
Okay, so, so just so Josh understands, well, Tim, what is your preference as the person who's introduced it? Are you intending to just withdraw it?
Yeah, I thought I already did.
Okay.
I'll withdraw my motion.
All right, so just so Josh understands, so there's no action going to be taken tonight? No action going to be taken tonight? And it'll go back then? The administration will do some research on what steps have to be done if the zoning is going to be changed. The possibility of C4 is still on the table, although we've had lots of discussion about that, but then we can, I could just come back up. And then we'll get that information out to everybody as soon as possible. We'll get Josh this diagram that was provided to council this evening. And, and then if steps need to be taken, we will let everybody know. You guys and Josh as well.
I do have a text from Brody, and I think this will be helpful for council. He said there's, if we send it back to committee, there's no notice requirements. And I did not clarify whether that includes amending.
Well, yeah, I think it would just, well, it's kind of a, I think we need a formal legal opinion because I think it does matter if you're changing the zoning. But we've got to just make sure we dot our i's and cross our k's on that.
I said, I texted Brody. He said there's, if we just don't take no action, it goes back to committee, there's not notice requirements for like, what would be with the original zoning application? The zoning application?
Well, right. But that, but that he doesn't, that doesn't resolve our question, right?
That doesn't resolve our question, but I agree with that.
Well, right, but that's what I just said. I said, C5 or C4 is still on the table. And if it has to go back, has to go back. Okay, Josh, do you understand that? Model, mass with great.
Yeah, that does make sense to me, yes.
All right.
Yeah, and we can certainly follow up on the timeline on that, but it sounds to me like that would be a subcommittee in early October or we would be reconvening at full council in early October.
Probably a sub, probably back to the committee level, back to the planning zoning committee for guidance. And by then we'll have a kind of a guideline, a timeline if, if there are other changes to the zoning code. If it's all right, would it be favorable to see if the planning zoning committee could potentially schedule a special meeting now if it has to get canceled if we find something else out? I think that would be helpful to give some sort of, at least a tentative timeline for the property owner, or for the property owners of the potential use. It's up to the committee on that. I don't want to put any pressure, but.
Well, do you guys usually meet before the second council meeting?
Yeah, but we would, we would not meet before the first council meeting. We would regularly meet before the second council meeting.
But if there's a way to expedite it, it would be.
But whether we need a public hearing is really important.
Right.
Yeah, regards to the timeline.
Well, it's based.
I agree.
We need to know that before.
We're also making the assumption that they want to amend their application.
True.
Let's get some facts and then if we need to set a, planning zoning feels a need to have an additional meeting, a special meeting. Tim has done this before, we will get council to do it. Okay?
We should coordinate by email and pick a date. We'll obviously be coordinating with Josh and Pete.
And we'll try and make sure the mic is turned on. I'll have that going forward. Thank you very much, Josh. We appreciate your patience and we appreciate all the residents coming out as well. We'll keep contact person with everybody informed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Either somewhere, okay.
Tim, do you have anything else? Those are the only.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I do have a question for Tim. I mean, are we talking about committee of the whole on the land use plan?
We are still in discussion with that. We don't have a date yet.
Okay.
We are still working on that for all of you. And as soon as we have a date, we will get that to you, but it's still being worked out with a consultant and the representatives from the Heights to come up with a coordinated date. So yes, we are still working on that.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, that's, thank you. Thank you, Tim.
All right. That's the last time we ever do that. Finance and economic development?
Someone has his hand.
Oh, well, yeah, go ahead. You got, you started this mess.
Yeah, just before Tim wrapped up there, the planning and zoning portion, I just wanted to indicate if I could. At the planning zoning meeting, there wasn't quite a summary. The summary included Paul Belize and his statements. There were some other speakers, including myself. I did indicate that there were some buffering issues along that commercial corridor with the residents of Perrysburg Heights already that could be looked at if someone would. And then I provided a, some information, I was just kind of responding about an article. I just wanted to indicate the information that I provided was an '07 article by Joe Varden. I wanted to get the names right if I could. Pete Gwynn was the law director here at the time, and then Rick Thielen. And then there, I went back and looked at the meeting overall and there were some, kind of some scoffing, I guess. All I was trying to do was respond that over time, the residents of the community have had all these different statements made to them by public officials. So another one, there was some scoffing, I went to '07 and it was 14 years and it hadn't happened. There's other instances. In '13, the then mayor said the same thing. There was, Perrysburg was actively, you know, wanting to make that part of, the Heights part of the community, that they were, they were trying to annex. Before the end of that meeting, there was some just commentary, something that was mentioned was that the consultant was entirely surprised or shocked when they heard feedback on the, you know, the situation. The statement was made that he was, he was shocked because it accomplished what they want. And so I wasn't quite sure hearing that, who is they? And it sounded like it went on further to say that the, the rezoning accomplished what they want. And that's kind of the issue that we had and were trying to bring up, that the zoning's residential and a change to mixed use would then take parcels, would take residential zoning away from that neighborhood. And then over time, that, for instance, Rick Thielen was one that said the neighborhood should be preserved and that the residents can count on that whenever there is an eventual annexation or when that takes place, the residents can count on it being residential zoning for as long as they like. So I was trying to go back, and there's another Matt Thompson article in '13 that has the mayor making additional statements, just kind of to allow the city to see that it's not, it's not paranoia, it's all these kind of, yeah, we're going to annex, you know, we're not, yeah, we're going to, no, we're not. Now we're going to use the zoning to accomplish what we want by adding in 40% commercial and saying it's still, you know, residential. So I just wanted to say that, that, and there were some other speakers. So if you all got a chance to go back and look at the meeting and see those, appreciate that. And any of the buffer concerns, if there's some type of solution we could work on there, that would be grateful. Thank you.
All right. Finance committee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Finance and economic development committee met on September 14, 2021. The meeting was called to order at 5:36 PM by Chairman Mark Weber. Committee members present were Deborah Born, myself, and Tim McCarthy. Also present were Bridget Cabot, city administrator, Kate Sandretto, lawn director, Amber Rathburn, finance director, and Steve Bronder, income tax commissioner. There were no objections to the minutes and they were approved. The appointment of Jason.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman? I think I said present. I asked that question before. Make mention of that.
And there were no objections?
Present means I didn't vote one way or the other.
Okay, but the minutes were approved.
So 202, 02, and then a present?
Right.
Okay.
I thank Mr. Daniels for his willingness to, oh, the appointment of Jason Daniels. I thank Mr. Daniels for his willingness to serve on the Wayne Public Library Board. Mr. Daniel stated that he wants to serve the community through the library. Ms. Born said she thinks that he will bring a good perspective to the board as a small business owner. The committee agreed 3-0 to recommend Mr. Daniel's appointment, which went through tonight. The ProMedica jobs grant credit. Glenn Grisdale, the city's economic development consultant, spoke on the ProMedica ambulatory and dispatch facility project. That is, it is a good adaptive reuse project and that they do not plan on expanding the existing footprint. Andrea Donahue and Eric Hulsmann of ProMedica are requesting a jobs grant to help offset the renovation cost. This project is at the former Ohio CAT building at 25970 North Dixie Highway. They anticipate creating 66 full-time and 17 part-time jobs with a payroll of about 3.5 million, starting in 2023. When the project is at full capacity, ProMedica will be eligible for a refund of $17,500 per year for the duration of the five-year grant period. Ms. Born stated she is pleased with the jobs and money ProMedica will be bringing in. Mr. McCarthy asked if they will still make the December 1st date. And Mr. Hulsmann stated that design work is already underway and that they should be in good shape for that date. Ms. Donahue said that they are very excited and it is a great location. Mr. Hulsmann explained that the vehicles will check out at the building of the, beginning of the shift, which means the ambulances shouldn't be leaving the facility with lights and sirens on. The committee agreed 3-0 to forward this to city council. A CRA application at Toledo Hospital, ProMedica. Mr. Grisdale stated that if the $80,000, 80,000 square foot building housing multi-specialty practices, including a cancer center, gets approved for a CRA, ProMedica will be assigning the CRA agreement responsibilities and benefits to a private sector party in the near future. And Mr. Grisdale stated that they are requesting 100% 10-year abatement. This project will create 57 or more full-time physicians as well as retain 59 full-time employees currently located in Perrysburg, meaning it has a job retention component. He added that if they move forward with the CRA, they will rescind the jobs grant request approved last month. Ms. Robin Whitney of ProMedica stated that the cancer center currently at McLaren St. Luke's will be relocating to Perrysburg in this building. Ms. Born said that it is a really great for the community and asked if they are going to use lead materials again. Ms. Whitney said that they will be following their general guidelines and will also make sure it is very walkable, some landscaping and enhancing the water feature that is there. I said that is a great fit for the area to expand on what they already have there. The committee agreed 3-0 to recommend approval of the CRA application. I asked Mr. Grisdale what other types of incentives there are out there for small businesses. Mr. Grisdale listed off incentives, including quality of life programs, high design guidelines, CRA programs revolving loan fund program, and state programs. I also had questions about income tax and confirmed we have 13 active CRAs currently. Ms. Sandretto asked Mr. Grisdale if he is going to draft the resolutions, which he will. Ms. Sandretto asked Mr. Grisdale if he is going to draft the resolutions, which he will. On the subject of additional sidewalks, this is something that came to the finance committee because we wanted to get it, um, uh, to the council before the service committee had, had a chance to meet, because they're meeting after tonight's meeting. So, uh, Ms. Sand, Ms. Sandretto explained that Resolution 9, 2021 awarded a bid and agreement in an amount not to exceed $100,000 with M&amp;M Foamworks LLC for the sidewalk lifting and repair portion of the 2021 sidewalk program. The original budget for the entire project was $200,000, of which $125,000 has been allocated. But at this time, the public service is requesting to amend the agreement with M&amp;M Foamworks to add an additional $50,000 to continue the repair and lifting portion. Ms. Cabot stated that in the next year's budget is another $200,000 for sidewalks and that the money is going much further for lift and repair than it has ever before. Ms. Born asked Ms. Sandretto where M&amp;M is located. Mr. Bronder said that they're in Perrysburg Township. The committee agreed 3-0 to, to forward this to City Council. And this will be an emergency measure because of the fact that they're, they're here working now and we want to keep them, keep the job moving. Approval of code updates. Ms. Sandretto stated that every year numerous code changes are presented and passed, which are then sent to the company that keeps our code updated. The legislation accepting these changes was missed in 2020 and, for the 2019 code changes. There is also proposed legislation to approve the 2020 code changes, so that's why there'll be two, uh, being introduced tonight. Ms. Sandretto asked that these be passed as an emergency. The committee agreed 3-0 to forward this to council. Accepting the certificate of estimated revenues from the county budget, Ms. Rathburn explained that the Wood County Budget Commission gave the city estimates for what they will get in real estate taxes in 2022. She asked that this be passed as an emergency because it is due back to the county by the end of September. The committee agreed 3-0 to forward this to City Council. For our new financial software, Ms. Rathburn reported that representatives from all the departments sat through demos of three different financial software systems. Ms. Rathburn explained that a request for proposals was done and we received five responses back. Software solutions was selected based on a ranking of qualifications. CMI, the firm that provides our current software, will not support our current software after July of 2023. So Ms. Rathburn stated that with the new software, we'll be able to see real-time information, eliminate paper and, as it is, and it's cloud-based. Ms. Cabot, uh, added that every department will use this to manage their budgets. I asked about it price-wise compared to the others and Ms. Cabot, uh, stated that it was right in the middle of the pack, with some lower, some higher, but definitely is the best fit. So the committee agreed 3-0 to forward this to City Council. The finance directors report, the committee reviewed the expenditures over $5,000 in credit card bills for August. Ms. Born asked about United Healthcare and Ms. Cabot explained that those are employee healthcare claims, that, uh, United Healthcare is our health insurance provider. Ms. Born also asked about the dollar general charge of $18.95 for cat food. Ms. Cabot stated that the food is for animals that are, we are holding and waiting for its owner to retrieve them. Ms. Born asked if we will be getting an animal control officer. Ms. Cabot responded, no, because the police chief determined we do not need one. I asked about, uh, Neco, N-E-C-O. Ms. Cabot explained that it's a mobile data collector and will allow us to build a better GIS layer. Ms. Born asked how much was spent on the two concrete pads at Riverside Park? And I stated, I had, I knew that the Gold Star Memorial Pad, which has nothing, uh, really connection for the city, um, was 100% donated by Lathrow Labor and Materials. And, uh, Ms. Cabot will ask the service director, who's in charge of that project, about the other pad. Ms. Rath, Ms. Rathburn reported that the balance in the health insurance fund as of August 31st was $170,000, $162.95. She stated they are still expecting some large claims, but said that we are doing quite well with the claims and is happy with where we are right now. In the tax commissioner's report, Mr. Bronder stated that we collected $1.4 million in August of 2021, noting that withholding was up. Overall, our year-to-date is 15.5 million. Ms. Born asked about individual payments being down 64%. Mr. Bronder stated that it's due to the shift in the due date. Mr. McCarthy asked if 2021 processing will be a manageable workload for his staff. Mr. Bronder thinks there will be more activity, but as long as they have a full staff, they should be able to do it. There being no further business, the meeting, meeting was adjourned at 6:47 and I will move forward this legislation. I'm gonna separate the sidewalk and the software resolutions. And if there are no objections, I'd like to introduce the county auditor and code update ordinances together, uh, since they are more of a, a housekeeping matter. And then I'll separate the two ProMedica ordinances. That's all right? I'll move. So I would like to introduce Resolution 54-2021 and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only and dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution 54, 2021, a resolution amending Resolution 9, 2021, an authorizing change order number one to the agreement in an amount not to exceed $50,000 for additional lifting and repair portion of the 2021 sidewalk program and declaring an emergency.
I move that Resolution 54-2021 be passed as an emergency measure.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to introduce Resolution 55-2021 and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only and dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution 55, 2021. A resolution authorizing an agreement with software solutions for the purchase and installation of new financial software for the city of Perrysburg's Department of Finance and declaring an emergency.
I move that Resolution 55-2021 be passed as an emergency measure.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
All right. I would like to introduce ordinances 46, 47, and 48, 2021, and move that the rules be suspended to allow for their readings in number, by number and title only and to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ordinance 46, 2021, accepting a mountain rate determined by the Budget Commission of Wood County, Ohio, to authorize necessary tax levies and certify them to the county auditor and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 47, 2021, to approve the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances to provide for the adoption and the publication of new matter in the updated and revised codified ordinances to repeal ordinance in conflict therewithin from 2019 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 48, 2021, to approve the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances to provide for the adoption of publication of new materials in the update and revise codified ordinances to repeal ordinances in conflict therewith from 2020 and declaring an emergency.
I move that ordinances 46, 47, and 48, dash 2021, be passed as an emergency, as emergency measures.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Moving on, I would like to introduce ordinance 49, dash 2021, and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only and dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ordinance 49, 2021, authorizing all actions necessary to enter into a community reinvestment area agreement with the Toledo Hospital and ProMedica Health System and declaring an emergency.
I move that ordinance 49, dash 2021, be passed as an emergency measure.
Second.
Discussion. Just one quick question here, if I remember correctly, these PRAs. The assessments, um, I don't remember here to make sure I explain it, is, for the school levies, is that part of this or is that something that they have to negotiate separately with the schools?
There's still required spaces.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to clarify on that one, because I know that question will come up. Thank you. Uh, any other questions? Roll call.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Last one. I would like to introduce ordinance 50, dash 2021, and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only and dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ordinance 50, 2021, authorizing a job creation grant for ProMedica Health System and declaring an emergency.
I move that ordinance 50, dash 2021, be passed as an emergency measure.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Our next meeting is next Tuesday, I'm, I'm sorry, Tuesday, October 12th, at 5:30 PM. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you very much. Safety committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The safety committee did not meet. Our, our next scheduled meeting is 28th of September at 6:00 PM.
Recreation? Thank you, Recreation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no, I have no report. Our next scheduled meeting is for the second Tuesday in October, which would be October 12th at 6:30 PM.
Planning, public utilities, personnel.
Personnel.
Kind of couldn't go and see that far, personnel.
All right, I have no report, but I do have some legislation to introduce for the third readings. So at this time, I'd like to introduce ordinance 41, 2021, and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only.
Need a second. Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ordinance 41, 2021, admitting codified ordinance 20.07 of the city of Perrysburg codified ordinances codified by ordinance 57, 2017, and passed on August 4th, 2017.
Move that ordinance 41, dash 2021 be passed.
Second.
Discussion. Wait, are we passing it? Or, oh, this is a question here.
I have some discussion on both ordinances 41 and 42. Going to voting no.
Let's just do, okay.
Uh, simply because I am uncomfortable with giving myself a raise and I did not do this position for the money and the service, so I will be voting no on both of those ordinances.
I, okay. I, I don't think we're giving ourselves a raise here. So I, I guess what, I was the one that brought this to the committee level. I think it, it makes a lot of sense to tie our wages. I, I really didn't focus. It is a slight increase. Uh, I want that to be very clear. That was not my intent behind proposing this change. I thought it, it made a lot of sense to tie council's wage to the minimum requirement to OPR's standard. Uh, that's, that's the intent behind the legislation. It's not to give myself a raise, um, but I, I certainly appreciate anybody that feels differently about that.
Well, just to be, just to be clear, this doesn't become effective?
For our terms.
For our terms, so, just to be clear, you're not giving yourself a raise.
Correct, right. Or potential on reelection, if I were to run for that, or anybody up here that's currently running for reelection. Honestly, I don't even know when they commence, so it'd be effective January 1, 2020.
Sort of oy to the one runner. Oy to the people running now.
Yes.
People who are currently getting a raise in the middle of their term.
Correct.
If you don't mind, I do have to, I want to inject a couple of things here. I personally don't plan to, um, vote for this, that's just more of a consistency with how I've acted in the past on these. However, I do want to make a point that, uh, that this, again, wouldn't affect me. It seems almost self-serving when I, I mention this, but with the president of council, there are additional duties that, additional meetings that, um, president of council require to attend, and I know in the past, it's always been a.
You are the only participant in the conference.
Thank you.
Please press any key on your keypad to remain in the conference.
I started talking, so that's always fun. Um, the, uh, with that, I don't think I saw anything that said that a president of council sold for a future president of council. And again, this wouldn't affect me in my term if this passes. It doesn't have that additional, um, uh, income for the additional meetings that they have to attend. Uh, I would recommend that if this does pass, that something similar would be included as how it currently is, that's an extra 500, however that works out.
I thought it did. I, I could.
Did it see that in there?
I believe that was in the.
I would recommend that if this does pass, that something similar would be included as how it currently is, that's an extra five hundred, however that works out.
I thought it did. I-
Didn't see that in there?
I believe that was in the- I'm pretty sure that the President of the Council did have additional money.
It was never requested that that be added officially, so it was not added. It was not-
According to the order, I didn't see it listed on the orders.
At no point was it asked that that language be changed in the last two readings.
Oh, okay. I agree with- I agree.
You are alone in the conference. You'll be disconnected.
I think what I would do is just stick with the traditional sense that my intent here, and this is an oversight, I should have gotten to this last meeting, that there be an amendment that includes that the President of the Council-
Gets the OPR's minimum plus five hundred dollars.
Would you like to take the provided, however the President of the Council shall be paid five hundred dollars more per year payable in twelve equal monthly installments and add that to the section one?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so you're making that a motion to strike some of the language, the language that was just discussed.
I think it's just additional language.
I don't think it's striking, I think it's just additional. He's correct.
I'll second it. Okay.
Okay, so we have a pending ordinance, but we also have a motion. So the motion is now been moved and seconded in discussion on the motion. This is just to have the language, not to approve the ordinance.
Correct.
Correct. I just want to make that clear for everybody. All right. Here, none, roll call.
Ms. Born?
No.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Okay, now, back to the ordinance that's been discussed. Are we done with discussion on that?
I think we're going down the line.
I didn't say anything, but I was planning to say something, so if you want to. That's really what I had to say, I think, the first time around, I spoke, I mind.
We missed that in the first round committee, so thank you.
Any other discussion, if not, roll call.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Born?
No.
Okay. With that, I'd like to introduce Ordinance forty-two dash twenty twenty-one and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only.
Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Born?
No.
Okay. With that, I'd like to introduce Ordinance forty-two dash twenty twenty-one and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only. Roll call.
Ms. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.